If I could call the Board of Commissioners for Tuesday, March 19th, 2019 to order. I'll rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. And Dr. Tompkins.
With allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Commissioner Bear, sorry. Commissioner Walls.
Here.
Commissioner Kennedy.
Here.
Commissioner Duckham.
Commissioner Tompkins.
Here.
Commissioner Mahoney.
President.
Commissioner Williams.
President.
Commissioner Elwell.
Here.
Chairman Shatwell.
Here.
A present.
Entertain a motion for approval of the agenda. We have a motion and support. Any questions, deletions, additions, or corrections? Hearing none. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Duly carried. We have no awards and recognition this evening. Communications and petitions, please present to the clerk. There are any. Seeing none, we have a special order of public hearing, Village of Brooklyn. It's time. Would you like to step up to the microphone and let us know, please?
I'm Jay Gutcho, the village manager in the Village of Brooklyn. I'm here on behalf of Village Council. I don't really have any presentation, but I wanted to make myself available if you have questions when it comes up in your agenda. Thank you.
Any public comment related to just the public hearing in the Village of Brooklyn? If you'd like to, please step to the microphone, ma'am, and say your name.
Hi, I'm Dawn Smith, partial owner of Boyce Farms, and we own the property at the northwest corner of the Village of Brooklyn. And we're not on the petition because I didn't know about it until last Friday. So I just wanted to let you know that we are in support of this. We would sign whatever documents required. We would like to leave the village if we could.
Any other public comment under the public hearing about the Village of Brooklyn action? Seeing none, is there any commissioner comments? Yes, sir.
I'm just curious as to what is the rationale behind this? I'm not accustomed to this kind of a transfer.
I'm informed, Tony, that we will answer that question under the item later. This is just comment time, not question time. Thank you. Hearing none, we'll move on. Public hearing is now closed. To traditional public comment, public comment guidelines, each individual will please state their name. You have three minutes to address the board. You may only address the board once under this public comment opportunity and may not yield your time to others. Board members will not debate nor answer questions at this time. First opportunity for public comment.
Carl Rice, Jr., Leoni Township. I was here during the Human Services Committee, and I'm just back to say number one, I appreciate the fact that I was moved on to the full board for consideration, for appointment to Lifeways Board Directors. And I know when I was at Human Services, I guess I came pretty close to the three minutes, so I'll be careful this time. I'd just like to say a couple things here. I'm not going to get into all the details of the things I'm doing with Lifeways or the state of Michigan, but I will say this, that everyone here knows how hard I work and how hard I've worked at Lifeways, and I certainly have a desire to continue that, to work for Lifeways and work at the state level on behalf of Lifeways, but also on behalf of Jackson County and the people that we serve. And I'd like to just put a shout out to Commissioner Mahoney. He finished his commitment. I talked to him today, couldn't change his mind. He actually convinced me the other way. His work, his five kids, his family, Lifeways has a lot of work. Not trying to scare anybody off here, but there's a lot involved with it, a lot. And he come to recognize that, and he come to recognize what's most important, and I can respect that. And again, thank you very much.
Carl, we all know you work hard. I want to comment on two issues. First, the PFOS contamination of the Grand River. We all know this came from Michener plating. It was a chemical, an industrial chemical, used in the plating process. I don't know if you all know this, but industrial chemicals are not tested. The only chemicals that are tested are those that are used in agriculture, those that are used in food and food processing, and those that are used in drugs. So we have chemicals being used in industrial processes that have never been tested for public safety. They've never been tested to see if they'll contaminate water, which is a public trust that the state holds for us. One of the problems is that the agency responsible for protecting our water is the Michigan Department of Environmental Quality. But the Michigan Department of Environmental Quality is funded by a 1% tax on oil and gas generated in the state. So they have an inherent bias toward industry. They are essentially a body that supports industry, particularly the oil and gas industry, because of this funding mechanism. And that was put in way back when Governor Engler. But the DEQ is not going to protect our waters. So someone has to step up and worry about these industrial chemicals that are being used. Now, the county commissioners have a goal of economic growth, and one of those things is to attract industry here to our area. I suggest that you should take the time to learn what chemicals they use in their processes before you invite them in. I suggest that you should protect the health of the people of the County of Jackson and the health of the water of the County of Jackson, and make those inquiries. Because the new chemicals that are being used to replace PFOS.
Thirty seconds.
Have never been tested for their safety. So in 30 years, if you invite in new companies, after they depreciate their plant and its assets, we might have the same problem again. Thank you.
I'm Brenda LaChapelle, and thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening. I am a volunteer at the Jackson County Animal Shelter and an advocate for the shelter, as most of you know. So much has changed for the shelter in this past year compared to where we were at this time last year. I am here tonight to thank the Board of Commissioners for putting this issue on the ballot, and I would also like to thank the Jackson County voters that passed this issue 2 to 1 in a landslide. So, very excited about that. Lot of supporters of the Jackson County Shelter are with me tonight. I'm speaking on behalf of all the volunteers. I would like to outline some of the accomplishments and some of the goals going forward for the shelter and some of the positive change so far. First and foremost is the hiring of Lydia Sattler, the Director of the Jackson County Animal Shelter. This woman is experienced, she's compassionate, and she is the real deal. She's a true leader. Basically, at Jackson County Animal Shelter, there's no animal left behind, and that's a good thing. Under her leadership, she has added to our staff, which we desperately needed, and we're not quite where we need to be, but we're moving forward with staffing levels. She's extended our hours of operation to accommodate our community. She has put together a volunteer outreach program with a proper orientation so that the volunteers are successful and they are appreciated. She has built relationships that the shelter has not had in the past. We have relationships with PetSmart, and at PetSmart, they allow us to do cat adoptions, and also they network with, they allow us to use their canine trainers so that our dogs with behavioral issues have an opportunity to be trained. And these services that she's forged with relationships are basically free to the Jackson County Animal Shelter. We're not paying for those services. So she's forging relationships, she's doing amazing things with that animal shelter. And also, what's come from the village is our animal control officers are back. It was the goal to hire three animal control officers, and I found out this afternoon that the third one has been hired. So, very exciting. So, public safety, in reference to animal cases have been addressed, community service has been addressed, people know who to call when there's an issue, they can now call animal control. And the cruelty and neglect cases that have been happening in Jackson for years and been overlooked and fallen through the cracks are now being investigated and prosecuted. So I just want to make sure that I was here to thank everybody for, like I said, putting the village on the ballot and thanking the voters for passing this, because the Jackson County Animal Shelter is just an amazing position right now. We have nine.
Thirty seconds.
We have 900,000 followers on Facebook. We have people from Traverse City, Ohio, Indiana, coming to adopt animals out of our shelter. We've never, ever had anything like that. So it's just an amazing thing that she's been able to do with marketing and with her relationships, and it is tremendous. So, thank you, everyone.
Good afternoon, or good evening. Thanks for giving me the opportunity to address the board. My name's Stephen Arz. I live in Summit Township. I own a company called Fry Crisp in Blackman Township. I'm a part owner right now, soon to be full owner. We moved into the new property that's across, right by the Myers, right in the Burger King, and we're right behind it. And what we have is a little bit of a water problem. What we have is the water from the, all the properties behind us are running down the hill in our parking lot, and we can't pump it out fast enough. Well, I have a video here, I'm not sure I can show it, but I brought the Dunnegans in there, and they built a trench all the way around my property, five foot tall, and the water got so high coming back from Shealy Drive and down toward County Farm, it looked like the cascade's coming over the hill into my parking lot. What I did was, I, this truck, picture of a semi, in my parking lot, is 15 days after the rain stopped, and the water's still coming out there. It's not coming off my roof and anything, it's coming down from all those streets. When I talked to Pete and I talked to Dan Goff over there, they said there's a statement that property owners have to take care of their own water, and the problem is, it's not funded. We all know how that works. So I have several pictures here, I'm willing to leave with you, but when I had Jeff Schneider out there, he's been out there half a dozen times and looked at it, he says, he believes that if we dug the trench in front of my building, down toward Saratoga Drive, that would take about 10 to 15% of that water out of my parking lot and down the hill, down there, and then across over to the airport, the drainage field down there. When we had this problem here the last two years, Teamsters got ahold of everybody, and they shut us down because they refused to pick up product and they refused to deliver product. Because of this water, that's not my water coming out on my property. And I wish, first thing, if you guys could just dig that trench out in front of my property on the road and just get it to run down the hill, if Jeff's right, that'll save me some problems. But also, if there's any way to make people responsible for their own water on their own property, I'd certainly appreciate it. I'm not sure what to do here. When I talked to Jeff, and he had me get ahold of Jack Grisga, Jack come out and looked at it and shot a laser all over the place, says, "It's not funded, I don't know what to do, you're just going to have to sue all the property owners along that." I don't want to sue anybody.
Thirty seconds.
I just want it to water out my property. I'm more than happy to leave these pictures here and be able to answer any questions anybody have.
Entertain a motion to receive. We have a motion and support. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Duly carried.
Thank you.
Send one that way for Commissioners to look at, and one that way for Commissioners to look at.
My name is Edwards. I'm a member of Lifeways Board, a current member, and I'm the Chair of the Mid-State Health Network, which is the PIHP, the Prepaid Inpatient Health Plan for this region. I too want to thank Commissioner Mahoney for his time at Lifeways. He came to us in a time when we really needed his counsel, and we really appreciate your support of our programs and what we do at Lifeways. I'm also here to support Dr. Rice. He's been a great board member for us. He always keeps our consumers first, he understands our programs, and he's very supportive of those that are suffering from mental illness and substance use disorders, and the staff appreciates the feedback that he provides. He comes prepared to all the meetings, and I think he's been a terrific board member for us, and I would hate to lose board members like Carl and Daniel both on the same day. So thank you all for your time. Thank you.
My name's Nina Gardner from Leoni Township, and first of all, I would like to see if I may submit some information.
Move to receive. All in favor? Those opposed? Duly carried. Thank you. One of these for each commissioner?
Yes. Inside these packets, you will find a DVD that's edited and then unedited copy, the Sheriff's Report and the Impartial Prosecution Attorney's Decision. This is regarding Election Night, November 2018, in Leoni Township. Corey Kennedy and his associates left their victory party to go to the Leoni Township offices with the intent to cause trouble. At least four of the six men got out of their vehicles and began recording with their cellphones, pointing them at the windows and doors. Kennedy appears to tell the others to go to the front of the building. One of the women inside calls 911. One of the men with Kennedy, Robert Sotheby, calls Supervisor Lineberry and insists he come to the office because women were shredding documents and taking boxes out to their cars. This was proven to be a lie. Sotheby files a false police report saying Supervisor Lineberry assaulted him. Corey Kennedy and Mark Carpenter corroborate Sotheby's story. Kennedy wants the supervisor ousted from office and will do anything to make it happen. I believe Kennedy and company's behavior that night was criminal and a felony. Kennedy's bad acts deserve the attention of this board, his constituents, and law enforcement. He tarnishes this board's reputation just by being on it. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
My name is Lynn Mauer. I'm on my third-term Planning Commission Member of Leoni Township. I would just like to, I know you can't answer questions, but your new elected official, Corey Kennedy, has not yet came to any of the board meetings. He is, my understanding, to come to every board meeting to let the residents of Leoni know what's going on with you guys and what's happening in our county. He has yet to come, he has never been to a Planning Commission. Carl Rice, when he was our representative, never missed a meeting, never missed a Planning Commission meeting. He always kept us informed. Mr. Kennedy only got this job because the Leoni residents wanted him off of our board. Thank you very much.
Any other public comment? Any other public comment? Public comment is now closed. We have no special meetings or standing committees. Entertain a motion for the minutes of approval from the February 19th, 2019 meeting. Support. We have a motion and support. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Duly carried. Consent agenda. Entertain a motion. Moved by Commissioner Elwell. Seconded by Commissioner Tompkins. Any items for removal at this time? Seeing or hearing none, Madam Clerk, could you post the vote? Thank you, Commissioner Bear. Now arrived at Standing Committee reports, Public Safety and Transportation chaired by Vice Chairman David Elwell. Commissioner Elwell.
Nothing to report, Mr. Chair.
Standing Committee Human Services chaired by Dr. Alan Tompkins. Commissioner Tompkins. Hearing none. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Duly carried. Commissioner Tompkins?
Next is Primary Consumer Human Services Provider Educator. John Clark is a current member. His term expires on March 20th, 2022. Applicant is Dr. Carl Rice, Jr., and the committee recommended Carl Rice, Jr.
Any nominations from the floor? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Duly carried.
Next is Commissioner, that's going to be in the Lifeways Board, Daniel Mahoney, and he has resigned, okay, from his application. Next is Commissioner Carl Rice, who is no longer on the board. Term is 3/20/22. I volunteered to be on that, and the committee recommended me.
Any nominations from the floor? Hearing none. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Duly carried.
Next is Region 2 Area Agency on Aging. This current member, it's been vacant. Term expires on April 20th, 2020. Applicant is Tony Bear, and the committee has recommended Tony Bear.
Any nominations from the floor? Hearing none. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Duly carried.
Next is Food Protection Hearing Board Commissioner. Term expires on January 20th, '21. It's currently vacant. Corey Kennedy has been the applicant, and the committee recommended Corey Kennedy.
Any other nominations from the floor? Hearing none. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Duly carried.
That concludes my report.
Thank you, Commissioner Tompkins. Standing Committee General Government Acting Chairperson Rodney Walls. Commissioner Walls?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have three appointments here to make tonight. The first one being the Economic Development. We requested one application. Mr. Jason Sanders, or Brian Sanders, no, Jason. His request came at 2:25 in 19. The committee recommended Jason for, appointed for this appointment.
Any nominations from the floor? Seeing or hearing none. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Duly carried. Commissioner Walls?
Brownfield Redevelopment Authority. There was three requests. The recommendation from the committee was for T. Mark Sofmeier, Brad Berlinsky, and
Any nominations on the floor? Hearing none. Concur with the recommendation from committee? Please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Duly carried. Commissioner Walls?
The only one that was left was the Land Bank Authority. The seat is open now. We have no applicants, and we'll continue to advertise for that one.
Thank you for that, Commissioner Walls. Can you take your second item, the JC DOT Parks? Yes, sir?
Question.
Uh-huh.
There was a.
I'm not aware of any. Delane, we can ask Delane if she's had some, but if not, we can, if there have been, we can bring them forward next month.
Thank you, Commissioner Mahoney. Commissioner Walls, your last unfinished item?
Yes, this is JC DOT and Parks Fairgrounds Site Grading and Preparation. The bids that came through, and we're looking for approval to move forward with the fairgrounds grading and the preparation contract.
Is that in the form of a motion?
Yes, sir.
We have a motion and support. Any questions or comments? Want to make the board aware that the Parks, the Fair Board this evening unanimously supported this action? Madam Clerk, could you post the vote?
Yes.
I'm not going to let you talk, so don't even think about it.
You have two of the best talkers.
This is my meeting, not, not Vinatose. Passed unanimously, 8-0. Thank you, gentlemen. I really appreciate your participation. I really appreciate your participation. Commissioner Walls, does that complete your report?
It does.
Thank you, sir.
Chairman, thank you.
At this time, we're going to go to unfinished business. And under Item 16A, the Michigan Indigent Defense Commission Implementation Plan. Entertain a motion, so we can begin discussion.
So move.
Support.
We have a motion in support. Any questions or comments? Madam Clerk, could you please post the vote? Yes, sir. Certainly. The motion is to concur with the recommendation of staff. A yes vote means we will be going forward with our MIDC Implementation Plan. For this year. Motion carried six two. Item 16B, the JC Dot Green Road Temporary Closure. Entertain a motion?
Second.
We have a motion in support. Any questions or comments? Madam Clerk, could you post the vote?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Passed eight zero.
May, Mr. Chair, there was, I believe someone here wanted to speak on that.
Well, they should have spoke under public comment, sir.
Okay, just clarifying.
I appreciate that. At the end, yes. New business. Village of Brooklyn Resolution. I believe Commissioner Bear has a question on this. Commissioner Bear.
Let me turn the mic on, start over. I'm not familiar with one unit of government transferring land area to a different unit of government. What's behind this, and why would you do it? What's Brooklyn's advantage?
There is, there is no advantage to the Village of Brooklyn. However, these six parcels are kind of isolated from the rest of the village. They receive virtually no services from the village. In fact, there is no water supplied, no sewer service available. There's no, no public streets. There's no streetlights. The only possible service that the village could provide would be leaf pickup in the fall. So the four parcels that are occupied have houses on them, had petitioned and requested detachment from the village. It was investigated, and seems like a reasonable request. They receive, like I say, no services from the village at all.
So the landowners are in agreement with this move?
Yes.
Thank you.
If I may, Jay, there's another property owner who's stepped forward tonight as she's not part of her property, is not part of this. Is it possible that she could be added, or is it something that's got to start over just for her property, or no?
No, I don't think it has to start over. The original impetus for this was the four parcels that are occupied. The other two parcels are empty, empty land, basically vacant lots. One is Zoned Agricultural, is contiguous with other agricultural properties that lie completely outside of the village in Columbia Township. The other small vacant parcel is contiguous with another occupied parcel that is in its entirety in Columbia Township. So the only, there would be probably one parcel if it was not for the village boundary separating those into two parcels. So, you know, in order for us to do, make sense of this detachment, it made, it made more sense to include all six parcels, the two vacant parcels, as well as the four occupied parcels, because that constitutes all of the property that is northwest of Goose Creek. So that's everything that's essentially isolated from the rest of the village proper. There is no connection to any services, streets, or otherwise with the rest of the village.
I'm still a little confused, Jay. Is her property part of this resolution or not?
It is part of this, as well as the other one, right. She was not one of the petitioners, but she was included because it makes, it makes sense to have contiguous parcels, right?
Commissioner Elwell.
That is correct. It is a private drive. It does not receive any street maintenance or snow plowing or anything from the village.
Any further questions? Any further comments?
Has the motion been moved yet? If not, I would move it.
So Commissioner Elwell has moved the resolution? Support is. Thank you. Okay. Would you please post the resolution? Passed eight zero.
Yes, please.
This is the MIDC resolution now? Administrator Overton?
In the past, last time the MIDC came up, the board made it very clear that they were not pleased with the state's initiative for the MIDC. It's not that the board feels that there were not some improvements to be had in regard to MIDC and indigent defense, but at the same time, they felt that the state was was, yeah, remiss in the sense that this is an unfunded mandate, and we felt therefore they were imposing on us illegally, frankly. And this resolution spells it out, that while we are entering into a contract with the state for this MIDC, this resolution requests, there's two therefor's, I'll read at the very end here. The, it says, "The Jackson County Board of Commissioners requests that the state of Michigan reconsider Public Act 93 of 2013 regarding the operations of the MIDC offices. Therefore be it also resolved that Jackson County Board of Commissioners requests that legislation be created and passed, moving the administration and oversight of local MIDC offices to the state of Michigan. In essence, we believe that the state of Michigan can create a MIDC office at the state level that would be much more cost-effective and efficient for providing indigent defense equitably across the state."
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner Elwell.
I'd like to move the motion, and I have a couple of comments, if I may.
Yes. We have support from. Okay?
Thank you. I strongly support the resolution, and I was one of the no votes. And to be clear, we had the, if I understood it right, we had the plan itself approved some time ago, and the MIDC plan that we approved tonight was actually the contract. Is that an accurate statement? And I still feel very strongly about the resolution and the wording of it. I appreciate the work of the Administrator's Office and Deb on the resolution. And I'd like to add the request that the resolution be again sent to the 83 counties. I think our clerk can send it to the clerks, and that we also forward it to both of our state reps and our state senator. Hopefully, they'll pay attention to it. And again, it's just ridiculous that we've got this patchwork of all these indigent defense. I support that proposition, it's just the wrong way to do it. And it's costing the taxpayers of our county and the state money. So again, I'd like to add that on, that it be sent to those people. Thank you.
Any other commissioners? Tony Bear.
Yeah, when this law was passed, it was unconstitutional. It shouldn't have been passed. My opinion, our legislature screwed up when they passed this one. State constitution is very clear that they cannot impose an unfunded mandate on us. But they're getting away with it. Beyond forwarding this to our, the senator and the two representatives that represent us in Jackson County, I would, I would strongly encourage that we file a lawsuit, just like Oakland County has done, rather than this resolution just kind of asking them, will you reconsider? I'd like to take stronger action and file a lawsuit against the state of Michigan. It's an unfunded mandate, and it's illegal.
Any other Commissioner comments? Mr. Duckham.
First of all, I apologize for being late. Secondly, I agree, everything, everything that Mr. Commissioner Bear said, I think is an illegal mandate.
Any other Commissioner comments? Madam Clerk, could you please post the vote? Resolution passes seven two. That completes tonight's agenda. At this time, we've arrived at the second round of public comment, public comment guidelines. Each individual will state their name, and have two minutes to address the board. You may only address the board once under this public comment opportunity, and you may not yield your time to others. Board members will not debate or answer questions at this time. You have two minutes.
Thank you, Commissioners. Matt Kuschel from Faheeh Schultz, representing Waterloo Township. We're here on the Green Road closure. We'd hoped to speak with you earlier, maybe have a little dialogue, so I'm happy to answer your questions in discussion. In short, we care about our roads in Waterloo Township, as I know you care about your roads throughout the county. And this road in particular is a natural beauty road, and we submitted a letter outlining all the unique factors regarding this road and its closure. In addition to the resolution you've adopted tonight, we were also hoping that the commission would entertain a resolution to direct the Department of Transportation to allocate the monies from this mineral lease to the roads in Waterloo Township, again, for the reasons we've laid out in our letter. It's really a unique situation. The road here is going to be mined out, extracted, completely removed from the township. Like I said, it's a natural beauty road, which has additional specifications and requirements. We're going to be impacting that foliage, those trees, that flora and fauna with this action, so it's directly impacting that, that status. And here, it also offsets challenges that all communities face with funding, but specifically Waterloo Township, with the recreation area and the state land, the impacts that brings to our roads, and then also the negative impact to our budget specifically within the township. So we were hoping to get a little more direction from this board, so that we, when we go back to our citizens at our public comment, our public hearing, we can give them direction about where this board is headed, get that additional input, and keep this process moving forward so that it can stay on track. Thank you.
Doug Lance, the Waterloo Township Supervisor. I just echo Matt's comments regarding this proposal. As my understanding, you have a copy of a letter that he drafted and that I signed in your possession. We also, we would like to be included in any of the discussions regarding this proposal, partner with not only the Department of Transportation, but also with Aggregate Industries. Waterloo Township has fought a long battle with the aggregate companies, and we have come to a point where we have a very good working relationship. It wasn't always, that wasn't always the case. We don't want to take a step back. We want to be very involved in the discussion. We want to be very involved in determining exactly what will happen, not only with the road, if the decision is made to go forward and mine through it, but also to work with Aggregate Resources, or excuse me, Industries, I have two, so. And the state, as decisions are made about how to reclaim the road when it is mined out. That's really all I have. Thank you.
Peter Bormuth. I wanted to speak a little further about the DEQ. You know, under Governor Snyder, Mike Shirkey, and the rest of the Christian Republicans in the legislature passed legislation placing two industry boards, industry-dominated appointment boards, over the DEQ, so they cannot even put forward new regulations that might, you know, stop a potential harm that industrial chemical might have. So I want you all to know that you are not in good hands with our all-state DEQ.
Any other public comment? Any other public comment? Public comment is now ended. Arrived at Commissioner comments. Commissioners? Seeing none. Go ahead, Tony.
I would still like to explore how the, this commission can send a very strong statement directly to our Senator Mike Shirkey, our Representatives Alexander and Leitner, that they need to fix this MIDC law. They are Jackson County residents. This is putting an unconstitutional burden on Jackson County residents and our finances. And I would like to see Alexander and Leitner sponsor legislation to correct this. I would like to see Shirkey sponsor legislation to correct this. And I'm not sure how to do it. I'm looking to the rest of you for some help. How do we put a strong request out to them and tell them, we're relying on you. Fix this.
I think myself and David hear you quite clearly, and we will bring it up with the Administrator, and he will present back to us an answer on what we need to do. Okay? Yes, sir. Commissioner Duckham.
It seems, Commissioner Bear, it seems like we send people to Lansing, and they forget they ever lived in Jackson. That's how I feel about it. They forget their roots, where they came from, and people seem to change. That's all I can say.
Any other Commissioner comments? Yes, sir?
Thank you. I just want to, I want to start by saying to Mr. Woods and to Carl Rice, thank you very much for the kind words, and also to Melissa, our outgoing Chair of Lifeways, and to say how impactful of an experience being involved in Lifeways has been in my own life, and actually helping me with the decision to reprioritize where my time is being spent. My deliberation on withdrawing my, my reappointment to the board was a very stressful one, but very needed for me to pull back some time so I can be a more effective Commissioner on the on the rest of the boards and the rest of the obligations that I have in my life, most importantly, my children. And I also want to say that I'm very happy that the Board of Commissioners had a reconsideration on supporting moving forward with the MDIC plan that we put out, put forth. I know Deb spent a lot of time and put a lot of work into that, to that plan that was approved, and to my knowledge, funded 100%. Just want to make that clear, that the plan that we put forth to the state was funded to 100%. Even if we don't like the way it's going to be funded, I think that it's going to have a tremendous impact on the way individuals who cannot afford representation, for them to be able to have proper representation in a little bit better system. So, I just want to let Deb know, and anyone else who's going to be involved in that process, to let me know and keep me in the loop of any way that I can be of assistance in helping us move forward. The last comment that I would like to make on record, which would be directed to our Administrator, is just asking about our progress on removing the box of whether or not an individual has to check a box saying that they are a convicted felon from our, our county application, which would not remove our ability to do a background check when it's necessary. But it would at least get a lot of individuals the opportunity to at least put their foot in the door to see if they're a viable candidate for a job, because there's not been one time in the last four years that I've been on that first floor and not seen a job posting that we are in need of good employees. And I think that we are obligated to give those individuals who have served their time and paid their debt to society the opportunity to at least make it to an interview process without having to check that box.
Any further Commissioner comments? Seeing none, we have no closed session. At this time, entertain a motion to adjourn.
Move.
All in favor, please say aye. Those opposed?